John, good to see you, sir. Busy.
Whoops, microphone on. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 12th meeting of the Garden Grove City Council. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Councilmember Brightigum?
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Here.
Councilmember Tuha Wynn?
Here.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yeah.
Councilmember Kim Wynn?
Here.
Mayor Protown Klomfenstein?
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here. Can I ask Maria Stipe to lead us in invocation and then our only kind of non-sick councilmember, George Brightigum, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If everybody could please stand and prepare yourselves according to your faith. Dear Lord, we humbly ask that you bless everyone assembled here this evening and the work that we seek to do. Help us to work in harmony as we strive to make the best decisions for our community. Purify our intentions, strengthen our purpose, and Lord grant that in serving our community we may also serve you. Amen.
Everyone place the flag. Hands over heart, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have a couple spotlights tonight. Starting with 1A, we have a community spotlight in recognition of Police Officer Renee Barazza and Jeremy Morse for performing life-saving efforts.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we would like to actually combine community spotlights 1A and 1B if possible. Tonight, the Garden Grove City Council and the Garden Grove Police Department would like to recognize several outstanding Garden Grove Police Officers for their life-saving efforts and for going above and beyond the call of duty. First, the wood officers Renee Barazza and Jeremy Morse, please come forward. In November of last year, Officer Morse was patrolling the area of Royal Palm Boulevard and Brookhurst Street when a citizen flagged him down and directed him to a female lying face down in front of a nearby residence. Officer Morse assessed the victim and noticed her labored breathing. When Officer Barazza arrived to assist Officer Morse, the victim went into cardiac arrest and stopped breathing. They immediately began life-saving efforts with chest compressions and rescue breathing until the Garden Grove Fire Department paramedics arrived to relieve the officers. After the victim was transported to UC Irvine Medical Center, Officer Morse responded to the hospital to contact the victim's family. The victim was visiting from the state of Washington. After surgical procedures, the victim made a full recovery and met with Officer Morse and Officer Barazza to thank them for saving her life. And next, I would like to recognize Officers Renee Barazza again and Thomas Reed for their life-saving efforts. Officers Kirk Hurley and Aaron Shipley for assisting, and Officers Cody Johnson and Edward Kim for going above and beyond the call of duty. Officers, would you please come forward? On December 22nd, 2018, Garden Grove Police Officers were dispatched to an address where a child was choking. Officer Reed found a little girl in the living room with her eyes rolled back and her body convulsing. She was taking short gasps for air, and she was unresponsive. Officer Reed immediately turned her over in his arms and administered back blows. After several back blows, Officer Reed checked her airway but was unable to see any foreign objects. She continued to convulse with her jaws clenched tight. At this time, Officer Barazza arrived on scene and assisted Officer Reed in also administering back blows and chest compressions until the Garden Grove Fire Department paramedics arrived. When the family members attempted to return to the living room, Officers Hurley, Johnson, Kim, and Shipley asked each of the family members questions, and the intent was to divert their attention away from the officers and paramedics. The little girl was later transported to Garden Grove Hospital Medical Center. A couple of days later, the family reached out to the police department to inform us that their daughter was recovering and that two of our officers, Officer Johnson and Officer Kim, came by the hospital with toys for the little girl. In both of these situations, had it not been for the Garden Grove Police Department's dispatchers professionalism and support and the life-saving efforts of these officers, the victims would have succumbed to their injuries. The officers relied on their training without any hesitation and calmly worked together as a team. They performed at the highest level in what anyone can consider to be one of the most stressful and critical life-saving situations. Their valiant actions hold true to the finest traditions and standards of the Garden Grove Police Department. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present officers with certificates of recognition, and the Garden Grove Police Department would like to present Officers Renee Barazza, Jeremy Morse, and Thomas Reed with the Garden Grove Police Department's Life Saving Award. Thank you and congratulations. Additionally, Assemblymember Tyler Diebs' representative, Brandon Urida, would like to present certificates of recognition to the officers as well.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, is it okay if they line up here?
Please, yeah.
Right here first?
Okay.
It's loud, come on.
Couple shots, guys. One, two, three. And one, two, three. Yay!
Thank you, congratulations.
Hello, gentlemen. I'm in here on behalf of Assemblymember Tyler Diebs, and I just want to congratulate you guys on your achievement. I know you guys do a lot out in the streets, so thank you for protecting our community and thank you for everything that you guys do. So, congratulations.
So, congratulations to all the heroes that are getting honored tonight, but also also thank you to all of our other guys who are here rallying and supportive of them. I love how you guys always rally together behind each other. It's awesome. Great team. Alrighty, so we'll move on to written communications. We do have one request, item 3A, right?
Oral.
What's that?
Yeah, oral communications.
Oh, you want, oh, I'm sorry, oral first. Gotcha. Okay. We'll open, check that, we'll open oral communications now, and I do have a handful of cards, starting with Craig Durfee. Maria?
Honorable Mayor, council staff, first of all, thanks for putting up with all the emails and stuff, but I will share with you a few words that my credibility went to the Sacramento Department of Education. They accepted my manual for the new career, take education, mandate for all state. My concept will be filtered, but it'll be much stronger. Second of all, our governor quickly spoke about water treatment operator, need quality water, we need buildings, we need tradespeople, and here I am tonight to give you Perkins 5 to the mayor, Economic Development Board, July 1st, all mayors in the United States. I gave you, but I'll have it before your desk. Secretary DeVos delivers remarks ASAP, Annual United States Conference of Mayors winner. Let me go to the page quickly, so a few words possible, reference to it. Despite a booming economy with record unemployment, employers after employee reports that it cannot find enough qualified people to hire. I'm sure you've heard of the saying there is a disconnect between education and economy. Just as the three often disconnect between child and school, there are assigned two. Too many students are unprepared for successful career today and beyond, and too many are treated more like commodities instead of individuals. They are each acquired the ability and aspiration. As mayors, you have been an important opportunity to build a relationship between employers and educators. Today, the giant silos, each between educator-employers, between student success, but students are better prepared when it comes to next teacher learns about the partner with the community building it does. And we'll go down further here quickly. Let me see, as mayor and as mayors, this year you have a critical role in helping your state shape Perkins Plan. For first time, Mayor, the law urges you and other local leaders to regularly evaluate student needs and programs to meet the meeting of those demands. Most of the likely work would be community economic development team. There you are. There is one in Orange County already. Your February 5th, you wish to hear it as all council. Your Board of Two called for trade labor classes. If you all write this down as a council member, one phrase, C T T E C H dot org, Connecticut, 1017, 70 trade classes, tech, high schools, guess what? Honorable O'Neil, the first female in history of Connecticut as an electrician. Yes! And under that note, we go to President Donald Trump, committed to women in economic power. You ladies, the councilmen, you need to get this on the agenda. It's employing a better education. There is no reason Connecticut provide electricity makes six figures if you can't get your education system here in Garden Grove to offer trade classes where they can be also treated equally. Further read that for later on. Now, the Federal Commission on School Safety Conference Guide for teachers from the part of education. And then we have the emotional issues in school because technology is depriving kids emotional well-being. You have suicide. It's all the way around the world. There is a solution to it. Prop 47 funds the deterrent of dropout rate in school safety and crime, but we have written a letter to the part of education to get permission to use the funds for dog training and therapy, service dogs, and it's been proven medically to work very well. And if you get skills, you're safe to pay for the overtime in the Prop 47. Then the overtime cry for teachers to commit themselves to the program brings like the Boy Scouts we were or the Eagle Scouts, a new penetration, so they become a very balanced individual. This is the goal in bringing therapy back to school and reform your education as the governor talked today. I look for your council to invoke your power and SB 1, 350 bill, which is your study on equality, which provides disadvantaged city, and you qualify for it, but you have to get legislators to convert that $17 billion. And they're only giving you, what, $240 million? Chuck change to revise your employer's position to hire and fill the positions and move on to a better program for safer out school and your streets and so forth. This is something I weigh down the council. I don't have to weigh on you, quite. I'm doing things for the college, Coastline College, I'm doing with the workforce development. I'm very busy. I've gained that reputation, and I proved it to you over and over, and then our honorable O'Neil said I backed up my work. People believe in me. I told Sacramento listens to me. I give my work to the governor, lieutenant governor. The message is clear. We need to reform education, bring some balance between technology, and give our kids an opportunity because the cycle of their plan every year is not a five-year cycle, so the people retiring, as you all know as experts in the career, we can't catch up with larger persons that's in engineering position. In fact, it's tougher now. So I encourage this council as mayor to take advantage of July 1st and invoke your power on the law of Perkins and start developing a youth commission. Why not? Get them involved with civic government, it's done in Massachusetts, and start developing a relationship with your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray Heimstra.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and council members. My name is Ray Heimstra. I'm Associate Director at Orange County Coastkeeper, also a Garden Grove resident. I'm here tonight to announce a series of smart scape workshops that we're hosting and partnering with the city here at Garden Grove. They're going to be right here at the Community Meeting Center. The first one is for residential's, property owners, and that's going to be on February 27th, 6:30, 8 o'clock. The next one is going to be on March 27th, and that's aimed at HOAs and apartment buildings. Everybody needs to improve their landscape at one point or another, whether you have dead grass, turf grass, maybe you have a drought tolerant landscape that isn't working, you need some help with that. We're going to cover all aspects of that. This is totally free. There's no cost to participate, no cost to the city, and we will follow up with whoever has questions afterwards and make sure everybody gets everything they need to know about rebates, what kind of plants they need, soil amendments, anything else. So, I sent you all an email earlier today that has a whole bunch more details and a copy of this flyer, so I appreciate it if you can let your constituents know, and feel free to contact me with any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Leland Sisk.
Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, from gossip to gospel. All right? Permit me to explain. The city has a website, I'm sure you guys know that, and there's a section of it I find very interesting. It's the map section. I don't know if you guys have ever looked at that, but there's a lot of information you can gather from that. On December 18th, I logged on to that website, and I looked up my property. Lo and behold, I'm in violation of the city codes. They said I was doing improvements without permits. Bathroom remodeling, doing windows. Well, I got it halfway right. That's my building permit issued December 3rd, and I paid $189.50 for this. I am remodeling a bathroom. Windows, don't know what that's about. But anyway, I made a call, and I got mine taken care of, but this is not about me. So how did that get to be there? My permit is still not showing up on the city's website as having been issued, but it was noted that I was in violation, so the person I called, I asked him, how did this happen? They said, "Well, people can submit this information via the website, or they can just make a call." And the information gets handed to a clerk, it gets put on the city's website, and before you know it, gossip turns to gospel. Because anybody that looks at that website thinking, "That's this guy, he talks it, but he don't walk it." Oh, yes, I do. It's right here. So now, let us segue to RV permits. Because of the privacy concerns for the people who own the houses where the RVs are parked in front of, it was decided that that information would be removed from the city's website. So now, you have to know the tag number of the RV, or you can't look it up. Hmm. It works for homeowners that's got an RV parked in front of their house, but it does not work for homeowners who have a valid permit. I think the city needs to look into this. I think the process needs to be changed before that clerk puts that information on the city's website. It needs to be verified, because that's really rather disconcerting. When you try to do the right thing and the city says, "Nope." We took gossip and turned it into gospel. Because once it's on the city's website, it's gotta be true. Thank you. Happy Valentine's Day, everybody.
Eric Nong.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. It's good to see a few of you after this afternoon's groundbreaking ceremony. My name is Eric Nong, and I'm a field representative for the office of Congressman Harley Ruda. It is a pleasure to speak to all of you on his behalf. Part of my duties are to represent the office and to advocate for the city of Garden Grove and our constituents who reside here. I would like to introduce myself as a resource and as someone who is working to connect our congressional office to the community. Please do not hesitate to reach our office if you have any questions or comments you would like to relate to the congress member. We would also like to extend an invitation to all of you to our first congressional town hall on Tuesday, February 19th, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at Estancia High School, and that is 2323 Placentia Avenue, Costa Mesa, California. We hope you'll be able to join us, and we look forward to building a positive relationship with the city of Garden Grove. Thank you all.
Thank you. Tom Raiber.
I'm Tom Raiber, and I'd like to start off and thank Councilman George Brimigan and Council Bowie for last council meeting of supporting my cause with what's happened on Bailey. Also, I'd like to go ahead and thank Scott Styles, city manager, for putting me on the schedule for 15 minutes. Our discussion was not relayed to the police department, so that's why I'm here. On Tuesday, January 22nd, I was here talking about Resolution 2075-62, Section 500, 875.5 and 54. That's a limited time parking on Bailey and Tiffany. I said then that I would start calling the police the very next day, which I did, which is Wednesday, January 23rd, 2019. I called at 7:46, 8:28, 2 o'clock, and 3:41. At 3:41, the dispatcher stated the Garden Grove Police Department would not dispatch for the law that's over 50 years old. Over 50! There's a time limit with the Garden Grove Police that they won't respond to a law that's been since 1966. I sent emails to an officer at 7:57 a.m. and at 9:04 with pictures of all the cars, 10 of them that were parked on Tiffany and Bailey, not including any of the residents because I actually had two of them move the cars onto the driveway. 10 cars. At 11:13 that day, I received a call from a lieutenant. He hung up. He was busy. He called me back seven minutes later at 11:20. We talked. He hung up. He was busy. He called me at 7:54 p.m. stating that the Garden Grove Police Department will not respond to any calls for limited time on Bailey and Tiffany even though that's a law. He stated that it's been moved on to Traffic Committee. He stated that it's been moved on to traffic commission. And, get this, he asked me two questions at the end of it. Why am I home all the time? And where do I work? I've never heard those questions before by anybody. But he asked me. He asked me again, and he asked me again. I had no idea how to reply to that. Very next day, on the 24th, I received a call at 10:18 from another officer. Never guess what he asked me. Why am I home all the time? And where do I work? And he repeatedly asked me the same dang question each time. Now, I told him I don't have W2 forms. He didn't understand that, so I have no idea. So on Thursday, the following week, January 31st, that $950,000 home that's still on sale, just so you know, they're still doing punchless stuff, another van blocked the sidewalk. So me being who I am, I called the police. I called the police at 12:59 p.m., and by the time I called at 3:08, the dispatcher said the police arrived and stated that there was no vehicle blocking the sidewalk. Really? I got pictures. So I also sent emails to an officer that's in charge of traffic at 1:06, 3:08, and at 3:30 stating, police are blind. On Friday, February 1st, early in the morning at 7:40, received a call from the Garden Grove Police Department from a lieutenant. Because he really likes me, I guess. He told me that the Garden Grove Police Department will not respond to any calls on Bailey Street on sidewalks being blocked. But I'm one step ahead because I do my research. So I got in my truck, and I drove down to the California Highway Patrol. Says, you know what? They got the whole state. You guys only have Garden Grove. Talked to an ICE officer there, showed pictures from a year ago. He's saying, you're really? Garden Grove is not writing tickets for this? And I said, no. So he gave me permission to call. He says, how long does it happen? I said, I don't know. Whenever. By the time I got home at 12:42, there was the same van from the day before. Should have got a citation the day before, but the van's still there blocking the sidewalk. I called my friend, and he put it on dispatch. At 1:44, the van was gone, so I called my new friend and canceled. My question to you, elected officials up there, where are my rights as a citizen of the United States? My rights as a citizen of Garden Grove when twice the police tell me not to call, and they're not going to respond? And why in the heck are they asking me, why am I home all the time? And where do I work? And by the way, there are three city employees that work for City Hall that ask me the same questions. I ignored that. Now that's five. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I received, in the past month, I received two emergency flood alerts on my phone. Well, I knew it was flooding because the water on Acacia Parkway, front of my apartment building, extended six feet out into the street. I could not get to my car that day, or the next, or the next flood. I grew up in Miami where the streets flooded a lot because there was a lot more rain than here. But they had a lot more open space, green space, so it didn't stay around so long. Now we have the problem of so much of our country paved over with no way for water to go anywhere but down the streets, into the sewers, and out to the ocean, taking God knows what with it. Several years ago, I was on a committee to study, suggest a presentation for the city of Port Townsend, Washington. And I did some research on what's known as pervious or permeable concrete. I downloaded just from two sites information that I'd like to present to the city clerk that can be passed on to you. I tried to get the county supervisor for streets to call me back, and he hasn't. The easiest thing to do, he surrounded a couple of concrete cutters and cut grooves down to the surface of the earth and let the water drain naturally. I do not want to be trapped in my home, or actually, I was almost trapped in my car because I went shopping, it wasn't raining, I came back, and the water extended three feet past my Mazda. After about 15 minutes of contortion, I was able to get myself into the backseat of my car, get my groceries into my little car, and bring myself up to my apartment. I don't know if that's what hurt my shoulder and my elbow, but no, it couldn't be because I saw the doctor way before that. But still, unless I can get into my, my car is parked on my side of the street, and I can get in on the passenger side, which isn't always possible, I can't get to my car. And if I have to park across the street, like when the streets are being cleared, in fact, I called the first time because it was Wednesday, and I told the street maintenance people, I'm not moving my car. I don't think you're going to want to walk me in the streets tomorrow, but if you do, my car's going to be there. Something needs to be done that will be a permanent fix eventually, or a temporary one for the short term. Impervious concrete or permeable concrete is the only way to go. It should be in the building code for all new construction. You shouldn't be able to pave over the earth anymore. And if Garden Grove can start that, it would be a wonderful thing for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the oral communications cards we have, so we'll move on to written. We do have one written request, item 3A, written request from the Korean Chamber of Commerce of Orange County to change Korean Business District to Koreatown and revise two existing monument signs located at Garden Grove Boulevard.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. The item before you is a request by the Korean Chamber of Commerce of Orange County to change the name of the Korean Business District to Koreatown and update the existing monument signs located at Garden Grove Boulevard and Fern Street and Garden Grove Boulevard and Brookhurst Street. The Chamber of Commerce has been considering this name change for some years as it is more representative of the vibrant Korean community in Garden Grove. A design proposal for the revised sign is attached to your agenda materials, and the insurance to obtain an encroachment permit for the work to be completed has been obtained. There's no financial impact to the city, and it's requested that the city council consider the request from the Korean Chamber of Commerce to change the Korean Business District name to Koreatown and revise the existing monument signs located at Garden Grove Boulevard and Fern Street and Garden Grove Boulevard and Brookhurst Street. I do believe there's a representative here from the Korean Chamber of Commerce, and I think that they would like to speak on this matter. Is that correct? Can we have them?
Please. Raymond, please come forward, sir.
Hello. Good evening. And the Honorable, the Mayor, Steve Jones, and city council members, and city manager and city staffs. And my name is Raymond Choi, and I'm a former president of the Chamber of Commerce and former chairman of the Korean Festival Foundation of the Orange County. So I'd like to thank you to the city of Garden Grove and for giving me this opportunity to speak about the Korean Business District on Garden Grove Boulevard. And the Korean Business District Monument Sign is located at Garden Grove Boulevard. Last 20 years, it's there. So, and also, you know, the many, you know, the Korean, the president of the Korean Chamber of Commerce, they're working very hard to create it and install the monument sign. And finally, in 1999, the first monument sign was installed to the Garden Grove Boulevard and Brookhurst Boulevard. And the second sign was installed in 2002 near the Peach Boulevard and the Garden Grove Boulevard. And we, Korean community was very, very proud of, with the monument sign. And we were celebrated in the Korean festival and parade for many years, and that the monument sign was a symbol of our history in the city of Garden Grove. And the past few years, and the Korean community has been discussing the name change for the monument sign because we feel it is too plain, and it does not represent the growth of our business and does not appeal to the other communities. So even if, I remember a few years ago, LA Times, when they introduced Koreatown in Garden Grove, they used the word as Little Seoul. And the Korean Business District is not the symbol of a Koreatown. The name change will be the, you know, the activated Koreatown. And also, it's notified mainstream as well as in other communities. Now also, we have a Korean community center that just opened on Garden Grove Boulevard a couple, I think, the last months. So the Korean community right now is in the thinking about having a Korean festival or a parade, and a very new future again at the city of Garden Grove. So with all this much happening, you know, please consider our effort. We ask your support to make our community as the center of the Koreatown in Orange County. And I know, we know that there are some Korean, the community is growing at other cities in Orange Counties. But Garden Grove is our city and then our second hometown because of, we started here 40 years ago. So, you know, we need your support to making our Korean town in Garden Grove. And thank you so much, and you have a wonderful evening. But I forgot to introduce the gentleman here. He's the president of the Korean Chamber of Commerce. I have another gentleman that we introduced is the president of Korean American Federation of Orange County. Thank you so much, and we're looking forward to you. So maybe he can make a little comment on the...
I don't want to waste too much of your time. I'm here to formally recognize his hard work, and I want to thank the city for welcoming the Korean community since 1970-something. I don't know. I've been the president only second year.
Forty years ago.
So I have to defer to these gentlemen here for their history. But Orange County needs a Koreatown that we can identify with. And although other areas are booming with Korean population, I believe as far as history is concerned, I think, you know, this is where the Orange County Korean Federation is based, Orange County Korean Chamber of Commerce is based, Senior Association, Festival Foundation was here, but they moved up. But I think this is the place where Disneyland tourists or any other people visiting from out of state can look us up and say, oh, Koreatown is in Garden Grove. I think will benefit the city and the Korean community, and we need an identity. And the Korean Business District, the sign doesn't really fit the culture aspect of the Korean community. Do you want to make a comment? Yeah?
Okay. Like, I don't want to waste time. So, good evening, Mayor Jones and the other council members. And for our community, Mr. Pat Buie, good to see you again. And our Korean district, you are the councilwoman, Tu Anhuen. Thanks so much. And also, all of them, you've been doing for good, good, you know, to help us. So tonight, he suggested, Mr. Choi, let me add one thing more. This is our town, our hometown, not Seoul anymore. This is our hometown. So someday, I want to talk to my kids, grandson, this is your hometown too. So I expect this project pass with unanimity. Okay? Thanks so much. Thank you, Mayor Scott Stiles. Thanks so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, gentlemen. Council members, any comments?
Mr. Mayor? I do have a comment. You know, I think the Korean Business District runs pretty much, half of it goes through my district, and half of it goes through Tu Ha's district. You know, I really don't have any heartburn. I think it's a good idea. I do want to take the council for a ride in the Wayback Machine and go way, way back to last year. And last year, we had a very similar request going by, and pretty much everybody on this dice at the time was telling Councilmember Beard at the time, the Business District is what the whole city has. Currently, Little Saigon, what everybody refers to as Little Saigon, is the Little Saigon Business District, the Valley View, or the West Grove Business District, the Harbor Business Corridor, so on and so on. And so, in an effort to be consistent, I really think that, I have no heartburn, we're calling it Koreatown. But I do think we should maintain that consistency that we have up even a year ago. Everybody here kind of agreed to that at that point, that the Business District was an important branding tool as well for the city. So that's kind of my comment.
I'll jump in. I just want to say that if you look at the image, it still says Korean Business District. So I don't think that that's going to change anything. I wanted to express my support. I think that the community at hand should dictate what they want to call themselves. I think that this has been an epicenter for the Korean Business District, and I think that whenever you travel up and down California, probably nationwide, areas are known as Koreatown. And I always thought that the name that we use was a little off, but no one was making a problem about it. So I was like, okay, they're happy. But if they're bringing it forward to us, it still says Korean Business District. It's not going to cost the city anything, but it's going to make a very large group of people very happy. I would like to say that we should support this endeavor. We have a very strong sister-city relationship with the country. We have a very strong Business District here. I don't see why we wouldn't support that. And I'm not sure what actions need to be taken in order to move this along, but if it's a motion, I would like to make the motion to move it.
I'd like to make a comment to add on to that. I think...
I'll second that for a discussion.
Okay. Very good point was made by the gentleman up here. It really is more than a Business District. It's a community, right? So I'm in favor of Koreatown, and it's still going to say Business District. I think it's just going to bring, because over there, it's more than just business going on there. That's a whole, your whole life is wrapped up in that, and the chamber is there, and I've been over there many times, the festival, and also to your meetings, and I think it'd be a good thing.
And a lot of yummy restaurants.
I'd have to defer to you for the restaurants.
Please do.
I'm actually...
I'm actually always believe in consistency. However, because of the, the statement, and it's also because of the history and the cultures and the how, where the community start, and I am, I actually have no heartburn for having a name Koreatown, because I know a cost, just like Castlewoman Kim mentioned, different in LA to have Koreatown. And especially even though they say Little Saigon Business District, but a lot of people know it's just Little Saigon. So now it's just a, you know, Koreatown, the Korean Business District is the same thing for me. So I'm supportive.
It's very good that we take this moment to, excuse me. It's good that we take this moment to reflect the history of our city. And the Korean community is one of the very first community that set foot in Garden Grove and have changed Garden Grove Boulevard from something that have no community essence into a thriving Korean Business District for many, many decades. And following that is a Vietnamese wave who came here after 1975 and transformed part of Westminster City and part of Garden Grove along Brookhurst Avenue, Brookhurst Street into another thriving economies from years ago when it was just empty scrubbery or other, other farms. And so I think it is very important to recognize that our city is a very diversified city where people work together, live together in harmonies, unlike other, some, some other place in other countries. So I think it is also important to reflect back the fact that I think one of the very first sister city that we established is a Anyang City, which is a city next to, in the suburb of Seoul in South Korea. And we have maintained that sister relationship for decades. And through that relationship, there are so many Garden Grove students and Korean students have come visiting each other every year. So I think this is a good time when we need to look back at that monument and see if it's time to upgrade and enhance it, to make it more beautiful, so that people in the world, when they come to Garden Grove Boulevard, they know and recognize immediately that this is Koreatown, another jewel of the city of Garden Grove. When I learned about this project, I was both excited, but also want to have some concern that I would like to, to address. And I have made numerous phone calls to Mr. James Bonchoz, Mr. Raymond Choi, Mr. Young Choi, Mr. JB Lee, who is president of the Korean American Foundation in LA, to see how do we make the best out of it now that we have this opportunity to, to change and enhance it. And throughout the conversation, I also took the time to, you know, drive to, to go to Brookhurst and take the picture of the welcome to Little Saigon, which is the, the monument that the city established in 2003 to, to recognize the, the Vietnamese Business District. And have follow-on conversation with Mr. Raymond Choi and Mr. John Kim about what possibility that we could do, and also explain the, the need to have, to maintain consistency throughout city. And I think throughout that process, we, we have identified certain couple area where we can, we can improve the design that you see in front of us. So on one part, we will say, welcome to Koreatown, big and bold, and then immediately, immediately underneath that, it will say Koreatown Business District. And then below that would be the word City of Garden Grove. So that will be similar to the, the design that we have for the welcome to Little Saigon. Now, that's on one side. On the other side, I also noticed that in 2004, city staff have allowed the Vietnamese community to be, to have on one side purely English, no foreign language. But on the other side, they allow for certain icon of the Vietnamese flag. And so I, I had made some suggestion that perhaps we can also follow similar design and allow on the other side a couple Korean words and maybe a couple icon that represent the Korean community, such as the South Korean flags and some other icon that represent their culture. The main purpose here is why we maintain consistency and standard on our monument signs. We also allows, you know, certain recognition of, of the culture that it represent. And I think Mr. Raymond Choi and Mr. John Kim, who represent the Korean American community here in Garden Grove, feel comfortable with that, with that suggestion. So I would like to bring you two to the podium to, to express whether you are okay with that, with that suggestion or not, so that our city council can, can take that into consideration. Could you, could you please come?
Thank you so much for your suggestion and your recommendation on the, the change, the name change on the monument sign with the, instead of, you know, the Orange County Koreatown, maybe we just deleted Orange County, put it on the Koreatown, and then, you know, the, Korean Business District. And I mean, below that, maybe City of Garden Grove, and then the Korean Business District. And the other side of the monument sign, maybe like you recommend, your suggestion, we can put it on something, you know, the two flag with the, you know, the, the, the Korean flag with the, you know, USA flag on it. So something, make a little, you know, the, you know, make a little more change on it. Maybe I can, we can submit it for the, that monument sign and the name change on it. So that's, that's a really, you know, your good suggestion and a recommendation we'll go for. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Raymond.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments? If not, we have a motion and we have a second. Please call to vote.
Well, I'd like to get clarification. So we're, just to be clear, the term Korean Business District will remain on the sign, but it'll be towards the bottom, Koreatown, as documented in this, this one up here? This is when you were talking about, or that's when you motioned on, right? So, okay. I'm, I'm clear.
I'd just like to add, before this is, this sign is commissioned or built, that the council could see a proof before anything happens, just being reserved for, make sure everybody's on board with the same idea.
Yes. I think that's a good idea. I think, so right now, we, we generally approve the general-
Right.
-general desire that it will say, welcome to Koreatown. Below that, maybe Korean Business District, and below that would be City of Garden Grove or some other orders. And then on the other side, there might be some, some, some different changes where it will allow a few Korean words in Korean language and, you know, the flags and so on. So, so we, we will approve that general concept, and then the actual desire will be, will be presented to our city council before it is being built.
Okay. Thank you.
But as you know, that we had a, you know, Korean festival and a Korean parade about more than about 30 years in, in Garden Grove Boulevard. So it's what, you know, Garden Grove Boulevard is already well-known as a Koreatown to the, not just for here, but, you know, other communities. So that's what, you know, the, and also, Mr. Pat Boye recommended, other side, you know, I didn't, you know, that we just want to change it to the, you know, Koreatown, but, you know, the, his suggestion with the recommendation, to put it some more, other side, make a little change, and then make it a little more upgraded, you know, Korean monument sign on it. That's what we would-
Just, just to be clear on the record, the words will change, but the aesthetics and design will be subject to your approval, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that all parties are okay with it before we build something.
Right. But primarily, we want to prove the task that, you know, the one of the, the sign, and we'll go, you know, from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just so I can be clear, so our, and our staff will certainly work with the Korean Chamber of Commerce on a final design, and then, as I understand it, we'll re-agendize it back to the council for final approval.
Is it necessary that we need to re-agendize it? Can we do it in such a way where it funnels through you, maybe, and you send it out to us?
I'm actually good with city staff approval.
Unless you get any kind of negative feedback that would trigger agendizing it.
So the council is satisfied when we get a final design to just, as a informational notice to the council about what the final design looks like?
Yes, yes. We don't need to approve it any further than just the action tonight.
Very good.
But give us a design and make sure that everyone, the Korean chamber, the Korean community, and city staff is okay with the general design, so that it satisfies everyone.
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you.
And it's consistent with the Business District thing we've been doing throughout the city.
Almost I forgot to the, I invited all of you to grand opening our federation building coming March 9, 4 o'clock. I think you got the invitation letter?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Congratulations, it's been approved. We will now recess and go to successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Brida Gumb?
Here.
Member O'Neil?
Here.
Member Tu Ha Nguyen?
Here.
Member Klumpenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair Buie?
Yeah.
And Chair Jones?
Here. We already did oral communication simultaneously with city council. We have consent items, just receive and file and approval of the warrants. Do I move a second?
Second.
Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. Any matters from agency members? See, and then we will adjourn back to city council. It takes us on to consent items. It's recommended that items 4A through 4G, I'm sorry, am I skipping something? No. No, no. 4A through 4G be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item. Any pulls?
Move the motion?
Second.
Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. Item 5A, Commission Committee Matters Appointments to City Commissions and Administrative Board of Appeals. After a bit of work behind the scenes, we have a complete master list that the city clerk has. If we can, how do you want to do this? You want to read it?
I can just-
And we'll take it all in one action? Can we do it?
Yes. Yeah. How about if I just go ahead and read the list of names chosen for each commission, and then after that, you can vote in total? Is that going to work? Okay. So for the, for the Administrative Board of Appeals, we actually only have four people selected. Did we have an additional person that we wanted to select from the list?
Colleagues, at your discretion, if there's any other additional nomination anyone would like to suggest, I'm open to it, or we could fill that at a later date either.
Can we read who's on the list first?
What we've chosen, or what's been selected to, at this point, is Arturo, Artur, Artur Sitewake? Thank you, thank you. Brian Newbold, Brandon Chavira, and Pauline Mary.
Can you repeat that? I couldn't hear.
Who was the last name?
Arturo.
Can you go through the list from the beginning, because I, I didn't get it.
Arturo, Artur, thank you. Brian Newbold, Brandon Chavira.
Pauline Mary.
Is that on our list?
She's, she's been, she was added.
Oh, okay. Can I, I'm sorry, say it one more time? The last name?
You can.
I don't, it's not on my list.
It's not.
Yeah, you got on multiple.
Wait. Are you sure? Is that okay? Oh, okay. She's over on traffic, but her, she would be under administrative? I mean, her name.
Yeah.
Okay, I got it. Should we clarify? Just to make sure that's-
Can I just get clarification? Can you have two, one person on two commissions? So there's a name that's circled here and also on another commission, and so I'm just curious if that's acceptable.
Our code actually does not address that.
Let's, I know it's been-
That might kind of-
I can vaguely remember.
Might disrupt the balance a little bit.
In the past, we have people in two commission.
Two or three, yeah.
That, I'm very certain, yes.
I don't remember-
And our court, our court doesn't prohibit it.
I think Whitefield was the last one I can remember being on two at once.
Yeah.
I don't, yeah, I don't remember anybody ever being on more than one commission.
It hasn't been a practice.
Well, I'm, I'm sure in the past, we had people in two commission at once.
I think they're saying it's allowed.
Not that I ever recall.
I, I don't think we should, though. I think we should give the opportunity to someone else versus having double dipper.
I, well, yeah, let, let's talk a bit about it. There are two side of it, right? So on one, on one hand, we want everyone to have an opportunity, so you want people, given people another choice. But on the other hand, when there are people who are, who are good at what they can do, you know, there shouldn't be nothing prohibit them from serving in two commission. For example, the Administrative Board of Appeal meets very rarely. And you want people who, who, who be good with administrative procedures, you know, legal, I think of that, to be, to serve on that, on that board. And so I think my, by, you know, forcing some to be on one and not on the other, I think we are limiting ourselves to, to qualify and good people to serve our city.
Well, shouldn't we go ahead and let her call the names, and then we'll have the discussion after we've gotten all the names circled and we know who's the-
Just off the bat, I would admit that was a clerical error on my part in sort of this process of shuffling things around and stuff. So I would suggest just removing Brian Newbold from Admin Board of Appeals, since we also have him on Neighborhood Improvement, which would just leave three on Admin Board of Appeals, and we could appoint more later if we choose to, but at least there would be-
Right.
-the majority. And I don't know how often they even meet or when next time they're planning-
And, and also, Katie Chrismore, I, she is my appointee on the Traffic Commission, so let's remove her from the Administrative Board of Appeal.
She's not on there.
She's not on there.
She's on, her name's there, but she's just not.
I think it would be best to go through the whole list.
Yeah, we should get the names first.
That way we don't have any confusion.
Let's go through all the selections and then-
Yeah, and then go back.
Okay. So let's go with Downtown Commission. The names that, that have been selected are Audrey Picor, James Sherbrell, Jennifer Stewart, Rebecca Wymer, Rick Lurma, and Angel Zaragoza.
Did you say John Weider?
No. Yes. Sorry. Audrey Picor, James Sherbrell, Jennifer Stewart, John Weider, Rebecca Wymer, Rick Lurma, and Angel Zaragoza.
That's seven. Okay.
Okay. Everybody's okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Traffic Commission, David Johnson, Josh Lindsay, Katie Cliskmore, Kevin Rogers, Randy Arbghast, Ricardo Cepeda, and Robert Dalton. For Neighborhood Improvement and Conservation Commission, Bonnie Crawford, Brian Newbold, Maureen Blackman, Peterson Pham, Roger Flanders, Jonathan Swaim, Vicky Hansen, which was a name that was written in.
Yep.
That's a write-in?
That's a write-in. Not from your, not from the type-
What's her last name?
Hansen.
Which means if she's, if she's willing to accept it, we would like to appoint her to that.
One, two, three, four.
Parks and Recreation and Arts Commission, Andrea Perez, Kevin Re, Marisa Solikos, Nicole Ramirez, Reyna Solis, John No, Ted Stevens. And for Planning Commission, Andrew Kansler, Kristi Lee, Dale Softner, Jeremy Lehman- And for Planning Commission, Andrew Kansler, Kristy Lee, Dale Softner, Jeremy Lehman, John Ramirez, Daisy Perez, and Man Jordan Wen. And that's all of the commissions.
Okay. Unless there's any other discussion, I would love to entertain a motion to adopt the entire list.
Make a motion. Second.
Motion and a second, please call the vote.
I'm sorry, who?
Mayor Pro Tm Klaufenstein on the motion, and Tuha Wen on the second.
Okay. So can I get a clarification on the Administrative Board of Appeal? We only have, do we only have three people now?
Correct.
Okay.
We'll probably have to put two more on at the next meeting.
Yeah, and anyone, you're welcome to advise any recommendations for any further nominations. We could appoint two more. That commission has five, all the other commissions have seven, but that commission rarely meets. But when they do, it's important stuff.
Yep.
Call the vote.
We already did.
Okay. We'll be sending out notices to everyone, to all the commissioners, and letting them know.
Great, thank you. That takes us on to items for consideration, 6A.
Item 6A is adoption of a resolution establishing the composition of the Measure O Citizens Oversight Committee, setting purpose, scope of responsibility, composition, structure, and other related matters, and this report will be provided to you by Ms. Stipe.
Thank you, Ms. Pomeroy. Mayor, members of the city council, as you know, last November, Garden Grove voters passed Measure O, authorizing a one-cent sales tax. The Measure O ordinance calls for the city to establish a Measure O Citizens Oversight Committee. The attached resolution provides a suggested structure and organization for the committee. Major topics include purpose of the Oversight Committee, member composition and term of office, scope of responsibilities, and committee meeting schedule and reporting responsibilities. The purpose of the committee will be to review the city's annual general fund budget, mid-year budget, and year-end audited financial information in regard to the receipt and expenditure of the fiscal year's one-cent sales tax revenue. This review will be based on the city's Measure O ordinance and input received through the community priorities survey. The Oversight Committee is recommended to consist of seven members. At least one member would represent the business community as an owner or representative of a local business. At least one member would be an active senior resident aged 62 or older. At least two members would have background in finance and/or accounting, and the remaining three members would be members of the community at large. All members must be at least 18 years of age and reside, they, they should be residents or business owners or representatives of businesses in the city of Garden Grove. The term of office would generally be two years. The first term would be a little bit shorter to coincide with our regular election and appointment schedule. As with other city committees and commissions, the mayor, with the approval of the city council, would make all of the appointments. There will also be an application required for consideration, similar to that of all of our other city commissions. The dates for filling the initial Oversight Committee positions are planned to be February 26 through March 12 for the application period, so we'd be looking to fill those relatively, or at least open the application period relatively quickly. And then we would be looking to bring recommended committee members for council consideration at the March 26 council meeting. It's anticipated that the committee would meet twice a year during the city's budget development period, which occurs between January and August each year. Potentially, the meeting dates might be March and August, but we haven't committed to anything firm at this point. No specific meeting dates and times have been established in this resolution in order to allow staff to work with the appointed committee members to identify days and times that will work well for the membership. The committee will present to the council in public session an annual written report, which would include a summary of the committee's activities during the review period, and a response to the following couple of questions. Number one, does the current audited financial information reflect that the Measure O Public Safety and Vital City Services Tax was collected and appropriately spent? And secondly, does the city's general fund annual budget and capital improvement plan protect and maintain the city's core services, including public safety? The report would also be posted on the city's website in addition to being brought forward in a public meeting. With that, it's recommended that the city council adopt a resolution defining the composition of the Measure O Citizens Oversight Committee, its purpose, terms of office, scope of responsibilities, and other related matters, and I'm now available to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Chair, or I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor?
Please go ahead.
You know, I, I think this is probably one of the most important things we're going to do here tonight. Honestly, you know, this, this committee represents a promise that was made to the Garden Grove community, and, you know, we, we get one shot here to do it right the first time, so I'd like to make sure we take the time and go through this methodically. I do have a few thoughts I'd like to share with y'all. You know, I've, I spent many, many years in Garden Grove Commissions and Committees, and I truly believe this needs to be a commission, not a committee, and I'll tell you why. I've been on committees, Garden Grove Committees, that have public input, and I've been on Garden Grove Committees that don't allow for public input. Pretty much the committee can decide, or, you know, and I think this is a very important platform for the community to be able to go and express their thoughts on Measure O, where they want the direction and that kind of stuff. So I really believe this needs to be a commission, not a committee, firstly. I do like what staff did here. They did, they did a pretty methodical write-up there. I do have some heartburn on the shalls. There's a lot of shalls in there. Shall this, shall that. Shall is a shall, and you're locked in. And we, and we are shoehorned in as a, as a, as a council, and the city shoehorned in. A lot of those shalls need to be changed to shoulds, just for future councils, for future, um, commissions, trying to get people on the commission. Let's face it, creating this commission, this is probably going to be the most prestigious commission in the city, at least initially, and, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna staff it with heavy hitters. But I'll go through it here. This, this part's good. The Oversight Committee shall consist of seven members. That's an appropriate shall. At least one member must represent the business community. Well, what happens in those years when nobody from the business community wants to be on the commission? You know, it must, okay, how about a should there? At least one member must be an active senior aged 62 over. Honestly, I don't see that being 62 or older has any bearing on Measure O. I, I don't know if that's actually a necessary thing to have. What happens when you don't have a senior over 62 who applies for it? So it locks you in. At least two members must have a background in finance. Well, okay, I honestly think it should say, all members should have a background in finance, not just two members must, but all members should. You know, we're gonna make every appoint, you know, we want, this is gonna be heavy hitters, we're gonna try to make this a commission, we're, let's try to staff it with people that have that background, but let's face it, we're living in Garden Grove, not Newport Beach. Not everybody has a background like that. We'll do our best, but this locks us in. We have to do it, right? So I think we need to look at that. Three, the remaining members, members at large, you know, I think they all should represent. I, I do like the idea of trying to get a business member from the community. I think that's good, but I don't think it must. I think it should. We can, we'll do it. If we can get two, great. You know, I don't think we need to be locked into just one, though. So those are my thoughts on it. Obviously, 18 years old voter, and, anyway, I'll, I'll quit jaw-jacking here and let somebody else talk.
I have a question. Is the committee versus committed, commission a semantics thing, or, because I'm still seeing that they're held to the same rules as far as the Brown Act, all that stuff, so I just want to clarify from staff what the difference is between a committee and a commission.
Well, under a code, there really isn't much other than just a name, because it comes down to what charge the council is going to give the group. They are going to be subject to the Brown Act, which means that there will be a public comment period, there will be an agenda, it has to be a public meeting. So it just comes down to the name of the body. The reason, I can tell the reason staff's naming a committee is because that's what was in the ordinance that was put to vote to the voters, and so we were trying to be consistent with that.
So I would keep committee, but to be clear for the public, there is no difference. So, committee. I have some qualms about council member writing comments. I agree, shall versus should, but I do just want to insist that we kind of discuss that further, because I think that this is going to be a very important committee that advises us and works with us as we move through the, the budget cycle, and so I just don't want to pigeonhole ourselves one way or the other, so I, I would like to hear other council members' feedback on that suggestion.
Could we maybe first here, we got this a little bit, I think, in a gender review, but maybe just a little excerpt from staff about the process of how we got here and what other cities we benchmarked, or what other agencies we benchmarked to come up with this set of criteria in terms of trying to do it. And within the context of saying, yeah, we all agree, this is a very, very important thing, we just had a major event affecting the city in this measure being passed, and throughout that whole prom, process, there was a promise being made that there would be an Oversight Committee forum to look on, to advise, be in an advisory capacity to the council. Ultimately, we are the decision-makers, but we've got an independent board. It's imperative that this, this Oversight Committee is above reproach, is, has the best interests of the city at heart, and is just sort of another peripheral voice that can weigh in in terms of helping us shape our decisions. So they should be highly credible people, they should be, have a great amount of integrity, but with all those things, you went through a process and said, how do we shape this? How do we define it? How do we form it? So I'd love to hear about that.
Right. Right, sure.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I could just chime in for a second. So we had, our staff did really quite a bit of research, looking at other cities in the, in California that have established Oversight Committees similar to this. So, you know, as you can imagine, they were all different. Some were five members, some were seven, some were nine members. Some of the Oversight Committees said you need seven people that live in our city. There were no restrictions. Some said we want lots of business owners, some said we don't want any. So what, what we tried to do is pick out some general themes. Ms. Stipe and Sean Park did a lot of work researching a lot of this, and, and just, so I mentioned in our staff report, what we say is that these are suggestions. So what we're giving you are suggestions of some of the general themes that we've seen from other cities, how they've done it. I don't think there's any perfect magic bullet with any of this. We were, I think we were also trying to be a little bit sensitive, to most of our commissions have seven members, we have seven council members, so even though we saw five and nine and seven, we said seven seemed like the reasonable number to us, but there wasn't any state guidebook that told us exactly how to do it. Fountain Valley, we looked at some of the things they did, and there's plenty of other cities. So I guess, you know, with that, you know, we, we looked at, most of the committees met twice a year, so we, we thought that seemed like a reasonable number, once before the budget process is over, once after the budget process is over sometime. I think we envisioned that at some point, the committee could, as you know, we go into a staff retreat. We'll be doing that coming up in a month or so, and we assume that maybe one of those meetings after the budget, as an advisory committee, they would give us post-budget advice and things for all of you to think about as you go into the staff retreat and as we prepare our biennial budget. So that's kind of just a little overview of how we did things. I don't know, Ms. Stipe, if there's some things I've forgotten that you wanted to mention?
Yeah, I'll just add, add a couple comments. So we surveyed approximately 31 cities, you know, in California, and a good, good number of those just, you know, identified residents at large on their committees, but the cities where they did specify various positions or expertise, we did have seven of those cities specify a finance background of some type. 10 of them, 10 of those cities identified a business representative. Three of them identified a senior representative, and then several of them identified just, you know, diverse backgrounds with experience in business leadership, finance, and accounting background. So we kind of just took what we thought were the key themes, and we plugged in the numbers, just kind of wanting, recognizing it's a very important committee and has a very important purpose. We wanted to put some structure to it, and that's why we designated what we designated. It's certainly true that, you know, you could elect to have any, any variation of this, and that would work just fine. So it's kind of up to the council, and it, I think there would be absolutely no problem changing some of the shalls to shoulds. You know, if we were to have difficulty finding a business representative, certainly we would strive to, but if the council didn't feel like that was a necessity, then we certainly could change that to recommend it, or should, or something along those lines. And then, you know, if the council feels more comfortable to have more members at large and shift some of those around, that's certainly the council's decision.
So if, pardon me real fast, so if we move forward with this, as it, as it stated, we tweak a couple of things when we get through the first round of this committee. We appoint everyone, and they're going on, and then we decide that we want to tweak something again, or change something again, will we have the ability to do that? Will that then have to come back to council to amend that, or would those be just recommendations? Or what would that look like?
Yeah, you would have to come back with a new resolution, making the amendment.
I think the single biggest thing is this document sort of shapes how we form...
Yeah.
The committee, composition of the committee. So it is important we do it now.
Yeah. I understand that the attorney have explained that committee or commission are just similar things, and that's just, just wording, that...
Yeah, our, our code uses three words to define the same thing. Board, commission, committee.
Right.
What's important is the charge, the, you know, the authority you're giving that particular group.
I got it. So you, I understood what you explained earlier, but, so what I would like to see is, even though it's just, it's just arbitrary word of those three, I would rather we stick to the commission wording, so that it's consistent across, and it doesn't cause any confusion with, for our, you know, resident, considering that, hey, this might be different than, operate differently than the commission, such as Planning Commission or Traffic Commission.
It does give the impression it is, when it's a committee, it's less...
Yeah, yeah. So since, since we have no preference, let's just call it commission, just let's call it other, other commission. Secondly, the, I'm not, at this point, I'm not too worried about the wording... Secondly, the, I'm not, at this point, I'm not too worried about the wording on the selection of the committee members. But I would like to zero into the mission and the power of this commission. The residents of our city have made it very clear that they are willing to pay one percent more for the sale tax. If we are going, if they feel reasonably sure that it will be spent according to what we had promised them, that we will spend it for. And so I would like to have this commission to have the ability, not just to listen to the report and briefing from staff that have been prepared for them and rubber stamp it, but I would like to give them the ability to go in and question and directly go to the staff, or maybe if we prefer, go to the manager or the director level and question those numbers. So that they can have reasonable assurance that when they approve the report, that they are certain that it's being spent according to the measure or have given us. I, and myself and Mayor Steve Young is a part of the Audit Committee. And a lot of time, I find it very, very difficult for me because, you know, we were given about an hour and a little bit more and go through a very detailed spreadsheet. And the, given that amount of times and information, the only thing that we can do is say, okay, it makes sense. It does not seem to have any risk, but we cannot determine whether it is accurate or not. And we just have to, you know, take faith in the CPA firm, the independent CPA firm, that they have to do the right thing. And if they make an unlawful attempt to misinterpret it, then they will be held under the court of law. So I think without that blind faith, there's nothing else we can do. And so I would like to have, to give this commission more authority to go to director and manager in order to understand, you know, all of those information. But, you know, those are the kind of things that I think I would like the city council to think about it and then discuss that and come, you know, fight to that at the future meetings. But I believe this is the right step in the right direction.
Well, what a quicker way to get through this is just start at paragraph A and work our way through it and see if anybody has any grief or heartburn, or if we have some kind of a consensus here, or, I mean, how do you think?
I'm up for it if you guys are. I mean, we can, we can, yeah.
I just think that, I mean, if we really need to go through it one by one, then fine, but I don't see the need for it since we all should have done this beforehand. And if we have concerns, bring them up with whatever item you have the concern with versus sitting here and doing that now.
I would like, I would like to have more, I would like to have more times because actually I only read this after Monday Agenda Review, which is just yesterday. Even though we were given this package on Thursday, but I've been overwhelmed with the tape of it, and so I didn't have a chance to, you know, dig in, to study it carefully. So if the council don't think this is, we need to act tonight, I would like to table it for the next council meeting.
Scott, is there any particular time sensitivity or urgency on this, or if we tabled it two weeks and asked councilmembers to dive into whatever changes you recommend and sort of hash that out with staff between now and?
That might be a better way than.
So that we come back with a document that's ready to go and we could maybe talk to any changes that were made at that time, but.
I just wanted to make a comment. I'm kind of like devil's advocate here. I kind of like the way it's written in the committee. I don't think we'll have any problem, and I'm open to a commission too, but I kind of like the way it's written. I don't think we're going to have any problem at all here in Garden Grove, finding the sixty-two-year-old that could possibly be a finance background, that person right there. The two people with the finance background, other members at large. I think we'd be fine with the way it's worded, but I'm open to commission and I'm open to other, looking at it a little further, maybe tabling and go in a couple more weeks and we can figure out where we're going with it, but.
I think we should stick to committee because that's what the voters voted for.
Yeah, that was, that was kind of my, what was stuck in my head. You know, we wrote it as committee in the ballot measure, and that's the main thing that's sticking out in my mind is why, you know, it's, it'll be a good committee, and I think we're going to have quality people on that in Garden Grove. And the shalls, no offense, the shalls don't bother me.
Until you're trying to fill those spots ten years.
Well, I don't, I know seven people right now.
Yeah, now, ten years from now, you know, I mean.
Anyway, I just wanted to vent that out there so you know where I was coming from.
I would suggest we table this for, till the next meeting. And we ask all the councilmembers to be diligent about whatever interactions they want to have with you guys, with staff, to go through concerns and possible changes to the document.
I think this is a great.
Between now and when we come back. So we can take that offline and then bring it back in sort of a.
And one more thing, just historical. The reason the ballot measure used the word Oversight Committee is because many years ago, when the state of California was issuing bonds for schools, the state of California called them Oversight Committee. And so it was a bond language for oversight of bond expenditures. And when cities started doing the sales tax measures, it carried over to those as well. So, you know, it's not something we invented. It's basically, historically, that's what these bodies were called, they were called committees.
And Mr. Mayor, to your point, there's no particular urgency that says this can't be held over for two more weeks. And so we'd be happy to accept any suggestions, thoughts, changes that anybody wants to make to send them to my office. We can consolidate those and then maybe give you a document that you can all look at with any comments each individual person had. And then that might help be a way to streamline it, the discussion at the next meeting.
And quite frankly, just from hearing his comments, it seems like the vast majority like the committee term anyway. So I'm not, I just want to make it clear, I'm not locked into this commission. I'm just putting it out there as, you know, bad in case, but I'll make the motion then.
Just to table it for two weeks.
Yeah.
Call the vote.
Seven yes votes.
Okay, we've got a number of other little items. We'll go through six B.
Item six B is approval of an agreement with Graffiti Protective Coatings Inc. for graffiti abatement services. Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, the city council is being asked to approve an agreement with Graffiti Protective Coatings for graffiti abatement services. The city has a current agreement with this contractor to provide weekend graffiti cleanup services. This new agreement will allow them to expand their services to six days a week and to expand their scope to handle city parks and facilities as well as the public right-of-way. The agreement will cost just over $271,000 and will remain in effect until October 2020. The agreement will be funded using $108,000 of general funds, which is already in the Public Works budget. The additional $63,000 will be funded using gas tax, which is also in the Public Works budget. Should the council approve the contract tonight, work will continue uninterrupted and will be expanded as described. Staff recommends approval of the agreement with Graffiti Protective Coatings and to authorize the city manager to execute the attached agreement. This concludes staff's report. I'm available should you have any questions.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions, staff?
No, just a comment. I think it's great to see this moving forward and helping keep our, beautifying our streets and neighborhoods.
Yeah. Just a question of curiosity. So this product, we spray on or put it on the paint and it will create a shell where the graffiti doesn't really stick to it and it's easy to be removed?
This company has the ability to offer that product. Basically, what we have them do is clean off the graffiti. And that can be done, you know, by painting over. So if it's like a brick wall or something like that, where you see the patches painted over, they'll do that. They have a special product they use to remove paint and the grease markers off of like stop signs and things like that. So we're not particularly engaging them to place a protective coating. We're basically engaging them to remove graffiti.
Okay. A few weeks ago, my block wall got some graffiti on it, and I, you know, I have to go buy paint and paint over it, and it took me three quarters in order to hide those paint. Is this stuff, if I put it on my block wall and someone come and put it, would it be easy for me to remove it, or how does this work?
For as long as there are graffiti protective coatings, they generally last about three years. They're fairly, you know, a little bit pricey, so that's up to you. You know, if you choose to go that way, stop by, you know, send me an email and I can forward you some sample products.
Sure. And since we're on this subject of graffitis, during the campaign, when I talked to other people, a lot of them complaining about graffiti in the neighborhood, and they kind of expect the city public work to take care of it for them. I explained that public work only deal with graffiti on city properties. On private property, we don't do it, but we send, if the city know about it, the city will send a notice to the property owner and ask them to remove it, you know, timely, which is, we are given like, I think, a few days to take care of it. Is that still the policy?
In general, yes. We do have special situations, a lot of block walls that are parallel to, adjacent to the public right-of-way, like a street. We have a block wall right next to the street. Those block walls are, tend to be private property, but they're perceived as part of the public right-of-way. And it's simply more expedient for us to go ahead and paint those out. But we do ask the property owners before we paint on their property, if we can do that. Of course, they're okay with it. But we limit it to just those types of situations where the wall is directly adjacent to it. We will not touch a private building. There's a lot of liability issues involved with that. And when you do have graffiti on a private building, that becomes a code enforcement action. And so we forward those issues over to code enforcement, and then it goes through their process, which is a little bit more lengthy, but it eventually does get it taken care of.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, John.
Mr. Murray, quick question. So since we're talking about this, in this agreement, what's the language say for, you know, I've always been thinking about, you know, getting a common color for the whole, all the city block walls. So what's the language in the agreement as far as matching color? So we don't have a tan wall with a gray cover over it. What's the current language?
Essentially, they're going to do their best. We have like four basic colors that are stock in, you know, that they carry onboard with a truck. And they simply do their best to match it.
Okay.
You know, there's like a beige, a white, you know, darker, darker brown type of color and some other one, I can't remember.
So going forward, if we can limit it, maybe make the whole city one color or four colors, we can, we could really improve our touch-up, you know? That was my, I have one wall in my area, unfortunately, that may be a gray wall, and then it had a tan stripe covering the graffiti. It was almost as bad as the graffiti, you know? So I just, I'm just trying to eliminate that and try to make sure that this contractor will do their best to match colors, that's all.
They do do their best with, like you said, the walls that are actually, that are next to the right-of-way. Well, it's the property owner, and if they want to paint it blue, then.
Point well taken, okay, got it.
A lot of times, we can't match that, so.
That's a good point. Okay, thank you. Thanks.
I'll move approval.
One second.
Call the vote.
Seven yes votes.
I think so.
Six C.
Item six C is appropriation of Southern California Edison's Option E LED Program Rebate Funds in fiscal year 2018-19 for infrastructure projects. And Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, city council is being asked to appropriate rebate funding from Southern California Edison's LED installation program. The amount of the rebate is almost $756,000. In November of 2016, council authorized Southern California Edison to convert about 7,000 streetlights to LEDs. As part of the program, the city became eligible to receive this cash rebate. In addition to this one-time rebate, the city will be saving approximately $40,000 to $50,000 per year in energy costs, and that's in the street lighting account. Staff is recommending the funds be allocated to retrofit our existing city-owned streetlights and to construct the La Bonita storm drain. The city owns nearly 700 streetlights that are primarily around the civic center area. These lights differ from Southern California Edison in that they are a steel dabot pole. That's how you can kind of tell that you have a city streetlight, whereas these Southern California Edison ones are marbleite, kind of look like concrete. Those are Edison poles. The city expects the LED retrofit of our poles to be about $400,000. And the remaining $356,000 will be allocated to the La Bonita storm drain. Any remaining funds, you know, should they remain, will be allocated to the Engineering's Division's capital improvement program and can be used for, it'll be a street improvement project that we'll use it for. Should the council authorize the appropriate appropriation tonight, staff will proceed with the LED retrofit of the city-owned streetlights and will proceed with the construction of La Bonita storm drain. We actually already have the storm drain designed. This concludes staff's report. I'm available should you have any questions.
Any questions at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Chuck.
Yeah, two things. Honestly, that storm drain needs to happen, obviously, over there. The other thing, and I talked to staff about it last week, all over the news, I think, and I believe it was Palmdale, these lights, the LED retrofit on the cement poles were, I guess, when it rains, they were causing people to get electrocuted when they were touching the poles. And now this, I think it's the city of Palmdale is changing out. They're having to inspect, you know, thousands of lights because they're already in. I was just concerned that we don't have to go through that process because obviously it's a very labor-intensive process. And it appeared to me to be the same exact lights that we have. And I guess they said that they discovered fifteen of them were faulty, that if you touched them during the rain, you could get electrocuted. So anyway, that's more of a statement, I guess, than a question, but are we in danger of that similar situation with these lights?
I haven't heard anything regarding Southern California Edison's light poles, which are marbleite. I don't know that, how well that marbleite will conduct electricity. It's kind of like concrete. I mean, it can do it. But on, and then with the steel dabots, you know, we'll definitely look at, you know, those plans on that. But I don't think that, I mean, certainly something to be aware of, and I appreciate that information.
Move approval.
$755,000. Yay.
Yeah. I'll second that. Call the vote.
Seven yes votes.
And Mr. Mayor, I know before he leaves, if I could, I did want to just give a little compliment to our Public Works staff for moving this project along. I mean, it's really, you know, we're getting a one-time.
You're getting props. You didn't even know it. You're about to.
I mean, we're.
This is, I mean, when you, I mean, I just, I just wanted to add, when you think about
it, you know, they did a good job of making sure this project moved along with SCE to convert all of their streetlights. And as a result of this rebate, you know, we had a one-time payment of almost three-quarters of a million dollars. Now we're able to take that money, retrofit all of the rest of our city-owned streetlights, and we're able to do it to fix one of our real high-profile. and we're able to do it to fix one of our real high-profile storm drain projects. So, it was a win-win. We're, they're energy efficient, we're, it's helping to keep rates low, we're saving money for our residents, so compliments to Public Works for all their work.
Great work. Thanks, Bill.
Good job.
Six D.
Six D is approval of an agreement with Axon Enterprises, Inc., and to appropriate funding for in-car video body-worn cameras and cloud storage for the police department. And Captain Whitman is here to give the report.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and members of council. I'm here this evening to obtain city council approval to appropriate funding and award a contract to Axon Incorporated for the purchase, installation, and maintenance of in-car video, body-worn cameras, cloud-based storage, and related hardware and components. The Garden Grove Police Department has utilized IBS for more than 15 years and is currently on a fourth generation of equipment. The department's current system is not meeting our needs and must be replaced. The proposed purchase would equip 55 marked enforcement vehicles with in-car video system and would provide 120 field officers with body-worn cameras. Several of our neighboring police agencies successfully use the Axon system and the Orange County District Attorney's Office has a direct interface into Axon's cloud-based file-sharing system. This feature will save countless hours of staff time and the cost of media storage since the video custodian will now be able to electronically send video evidence files to the DA instead of burning media to DVD. The city of Tucson, Arizona recently solicited bids through a request-for-proposal process and subsequently awarded a purchase order contract to Axon for an integrated system to include in-car video, body-worn cameras, and a cloud-based storage. Section 2.50.060, subsection E of the Garden Grove Municipal Code allows an exception to competitive bidding process when another public agency has competitively procured the same goods and/or services and when the purchase price and other terms similar to those in a contract awarded are made available to the city of Garden Grove. It is recommended that the city use the cooperative purchasing agreement on the Tucson purchase order contract with Axon to secure goods and services at the same unit price or lower as specified in the contract. The total project cost is $1,449.42, which includes a contingency amount of $45,363. The project cost will be spread over five budget years. It is recommended that the first-year balance of $453,630.38 be appropriated from the Fleet Management Fund as the integrated system is installed directly into police vehicles. For contract years two through five, budget appropriation in the amount of $237,504 will be addressed during the regular budget cycle. It is recommended that city council approve an agreement with Axon Enterprise, Inc., in the amount of $1,403,646.38 for the purchase of in-car video, body-worn camera, cloud storage, and related hardware components, and appropriate $453,630.38 from the Fleet Management Fund. And appropriate from the Fleet Management Fund, the cost of not more than 10% of the first-year contract amount, or $45,363, for unforeseen contingencies during the project implementation and management stages of the project with the approval of the city manager or his designee, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mayor Protim.
I think the first thing is thank you for the detailed report. And my question has to do with the cloud storage component, just the technologies used. How are we keeping things secure and safe with all these technologies at play?
I actually have on and routed a director of IT that could answer that question.
Thank you.
So, the cloud storage is, that Axon is using, is secured via user authentication, so they have to log in. They're using rules and technology that Department of Justice in California requires for [inaudible].
Okay.
That's been vetted and that's why it can be used by various public safety agencies.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Question for the city attorney. In the event that the cloud security is via, you know, being compensative, you know, like hackers and I think, no one is, the city is not liable for it? And so, is Axon or what, how do we deal with that?
So, under the agreement, that is going to be maintained by Axon. And it will depend on how the hack occurred, whether it was our personnel who compromised the entry into the system or whether we had nothing to do with it and it was on the Axon's side. But in any event, both federal and state regulations, you know, already take into account, you know, the possibility that that could happen. But in terms of liability, you know, this is, this would just be evidence. So, there wouldn't be liability to third parties. It would just be our evidence compromised in those situations.
So, in the event, let's just say, the video has certain implication whether to the officer or to the offenders or some sort. And hacker were able to get in and get, you know, those information and it turned out that their privacy, whether that the officer's privacy or the victim's privacy is compromised. We are not liable for that. Is that right?
Well, I don't see a situation where, you know, we would be liable for hackers, you know, breaking into a system. Because the recording that we're doing is basically our officers' day-to-day work. So, I don't see how, you know, someone's privacy would be implicated in such a situation. The only time we would be liable is if we intentionally released the information. You know, the fact that a hacker did it, we would not have that exposure to liability.
Okay.
I'll move to approve. Call to vote.
Okay. Thank you.
See, I want to get both fingers raised.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, we move on to ordinances presented for a second reading. We have four of them, so seven A.
Seven A is second reading of ordinance number 2901 entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Approving Planned Unit Development Number PUD 10382, Revised 2018. Amendment to Plan Unit Development Number PUD 10382 to allow for reconstruction of an existing on-premise freeway-oriented digital sign for the Toyota Place Automobile Dealership on property located at 9444 Trask Avenue, Assessor's Parcel Number 09809063.
Motion. Second.
Hey, Tom, this thing won't work.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Seven B.
Item seven B is second reading of ordinance number 2901 entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, amending and restating chapter 848 of title eight of the Garden Grove Municipal Code pertaining to vending on the public right-of-way and regulating sidewalk vendors.
So, moved. Approved.
Motion, second. Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Seven C.
Item seven C is second reading of ordinance number 2902 entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, adding chapter 1860 to title 18 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code, implementing a construction and demolition waste recycling program.
Second.
Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Seventy.
Item seventy is second reading of ordinance number 2903 entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, amending section 12210 of chapter 122 of title one and adding chapter 82 of title eight of the Garden Grove Municipal Code to enhance the city's code enforcement program by increasing administrative fines for violations of building and safety codes and prohibiting commercial advertisements for unlawful activities
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, it takes us on to matters. We do have a couple. So, first is item eight A. This is consideration of appointments for an ad hoc committee for the Willowitt Golf Course site as requested by city council. Do you want to say anything or you want me to just dive into this?
Mr. Mayor, this is a follow-up from our joint study session with the city of Santa Ana. And it was, yeah, my recollection at that meeting is both of the city councils directed the staffs to identify a three-member ad hoc committee from each council who would then, the six council members who would then work together, furthering the discussion about the RFPs that are going out about our Willowitt Golf Course discussion and then, you know, bringing forward information back to their respective council members about what the discussion was.
So, we're heading down a path, together with city of Santa Ana, we've had two joint study sessions of our entire city councils. And this concept of creating an ad hoc committee actually came from Santa Ana, so we're obliging them in creating one so that, just to kind of streamline this process of having a smaller subgroup that could probably meet more regularly and then report back out to their respective councils. I want to be clear that, you know, an opportunity this magnitude is certainly something that I think our entire council wants to be actively a part of, and we will be, so we'll make sure that happens. So, again, this is, to some extent, is a formality to appease city of Santa Ana that wants to do an ad hoc committee, so we're going to do an ad hoc committee too so that we can get together with them more often. We will all be actively engaged in this. I would like to, there will be probably some degree of negotiations of terms and whatnot at this ad hoc committee, so I think it's important that I'm involved in it myself. So, I would like to nominate myself, I would like to nominate council member Fat Buie and council member Kim Nguyen to serve as our three-member ad hoc committee. And if I can.
I'll second it.
Yeah, I'll make that a motion in a second. Thank you. Any discussion otherwise, call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. Eight B.
Item eight B is discussion regarding city hall 980 work schedule as requested by council member Brede.
Thank you. Again, I wanted to discuss the possibility of having city hall open every Friday instead of every other Friday. What's the feasibility? What's the drawbacks? Is there any cost associated to that? You know, trying to kind of get ideas from you guys, what you all think about the idea. I think that, you know, city is in the business of community service and truly, you can't do that when you're closed. We have developers, we have business owners who need to get their inspections so they can move on with their projects. But every Friday, city's closed, so nobody's going out there and, you know, not every, I'm sorry, every other Friday. We've had numerous, I've heard the story numerous times, like of, you know, coming in and trying to do business with the city and all the doors are locked and now I gotta, you know, it is kind of an inconvenience for a lot of people. I don't think that it's necessarily that big of a deal to do a little scheduling to make, to make it happen. I don't think the cost is necessarily that tremendous to make it happen. I'm not talking about changing work schedules, stay on the 980, but let's say you have, let's say you have four building inspectors, okay? Well, two of them are going to work the first and third Friday and two of them would work the second and fourth Friday. So, now you've got coverage for the whole week. You know, so it doesn't change that, so I don't even think it requires a meet and confer with their unions because you're not even changing the work hours. So, I think it's a very simple thing that we can do. I think it's something that's well overdue. I know a lot of cities are going to the path of less service and being closed more than not, and I don't think, I think we should be leading by example. I think, you know, we should be there for our community. So, I would propose that we maybe let staff put together a report on the process and maybe give direction. Obviously, we don't want to do anything until, what, the next fiscal year, most likely, so if we did decide to do this, it would probably be something that would be implemented in probably June or July-ish, so we don't have to jump on this right down. But I just kind of want to get your guys' feeling on it. If we're on the same page, if I'm way off base, I don't know. So, you know.
I think it's a good idea. I myself, few times come to the city hall to pay bills because my wife is very traditional. She do not want me to pay over the internet. She do not want me to pay.
But you're a tech guy.
But she doesn't trust my sense of technology. And she doesn't want to pay by credit card because it costs her a couple percent. So, every time we pay bills, she asks me to come to the city council, city hall and pull out the check and pay. And a couple of times, even myself, sometime I didn't check and I came here and the doctor thought, oh, okay, it's closed today, right, of course. So, I think it's a good idea. Also, there have been a lot of developers, construction projects, that a day delay sometime mean a week delay for them. Not just a day, but sometimes a weeks. It so depends. So, I think it's a good idea that we explore it and cannot see how much cost it is since we have to turn on the air conditioner anyway.
We don't, actually.
We don't?
Right, that's, I would say there are some basic savings just in the fact that the building is shut down that day, so lights are off, AC is off, whatever.
Actually, the lights are off.
Actually, the lights are on.
When you walk through it, there's a motion sensor that turns lights on, but they're all.
No, the main ones are on, some of them come off and on.
Only like emergency. But for the most part, there's energy savings and there's.
I'm not sure about the air conditioner, but I remember in the summer when I walk in here, every now and then, even during the weekend, I notice, I do not see the air blowing, but I feel that it's very cool. So, I think it may be turning down a little bit, but I'm sure that it must be on, otherwise it would be, I would feel the heat.
I come in every Friday and there's usually city staff here working anyway. Yeah. I mean, so the lights are on, the air conditioner's on, there's some computers on, so I really think any energy savings is negligible, but.
So, well, anyway, we do not know how much it costs or, you know, whether it's cost a lot or it costs a little. I think it's worth it for staff to take a look at it and see how much it costs. If it costs a lot, then yeah, okay, let have a second thought of it. But it doesn't cost a lot, let do it.
I'm just, I mean, with all due respect, I think it's always important to look for ways to better serve our community. I think that's part of why we're here, absolutely. But I have to kind of play devil's advocate a little bit and I look at some of the disadvantages and I look at some of the cost savings by having us closed on those alternating Fridays. And this wasn't something that was established two years ago, this has been happening since 1991, in all fairness. So, I think people know by now that we're closed on those Fridays, I would think. When I read through this and I look at this, I would need more information to say that I could be comfortable with making a decision like this. What we have on the table now is not enough for me to.
We're not rushing to decision. What we're trying to say is, is it worth it for staff to take a look at that and see how much it costs? And then, if it doesn't cost a lot, then we might.
Maybe it's something we consider, maybe it's something we just flush down the toilet.
If it costs a lot, then we may say, okay, forget it. If it costs a lot, then we may say, okay, forget it.
It's, you know, one of the things that came up in discussion just Friday was, when you go to the website, and everybody said, well, you just have to look at the website, and you know when it's closed, but when you go to the website, it just said, "Closed, alternating Fridays." Well, which is alternating Friday, is it this Friday or next Friday? Which one is it, you know? And so people would just have to roll the dice, and yes, it's been that way for a long time, since the 90s, I believe, is what the-
Right, and I can attach to it, right? I, even recently-
But it's been a problem since the 90s.
I came to City Hall, and I go, oh, it's closed. And there's all the time when I was here on a Friday that it closed, people come by and try to open the door, and I have to tell them, sorry, the city is closed today. So there's a lot of people who doesn't know.
I'd like to hear from John.
I'd like to make a comment. So, yeah, I'm all for looking at it and looking at the cost, but this is a bigger, this is more complicated than you think.
Yeah.
We have a city of over 600 employees, and we're not just going to bring in a few people to work in the main office, it's going to be, everybody in the city's going to be working. I can tell you right now, negotiations with all the different groups that we negotiate with for wages and represent, the representative, they're going to want to negotiate a different contract. You know, there's a lot to it, so if we do look at it, we need to get all the costs and changing the work schedule. Maybe you can do a 980 and rotate and cover it, but I think you're going to really have the whole city open. And if you look back through the history, the reason this was created was, it did save money to the city to have those fourth Friday, or every other Friday off. It was part of, you know, we were in a bind financially, and we looked at it, and hey, we can save this kind of money. You know, the, there's a morale thing, I mean, you've got employees that they like that day off, and, you know, it's, they've had that for a long time, so it'd be a big shock to our 600 employees to go to do that. I'm just throwing that out there, because I know if I had that schedule and a change, you know, I'd have to roll with it, if it goes that way, that's fine, but it's kind of a morale thing.
Because John O'Neill, we are not asking everyone to work every Friday, right?
No, I understand, I understand.
They still have their Friday off, it's just they take the alternating their Friday off, so that-
I don't think it's that simple.
I'm all for looking-
It's going to be a little more difficult.
I'm all for looking into it, but again, it's nothing that needs to be, you know, again, I think it's something we should, just from due diligence and out of responsibility to our community, we should explore. If the cost is negligible, or, you know, then maybe it's something we decide we want to do, if it's a big deal and it's going to be a bunch of issues involved, then maybe we decide we don't want to do it. But I think, just being responsible, we should at least explore the issue and see, because I've heard it from so many people over so long of a period of time, and it just seems to me to be a no-brainer, we should at least look into it.
Okay.
Go for it.
I'll just make a couple of comments, I think this is going to open up Pandora's Box, but I'm not opposed to opening it on a couple of things. Number one, looking at it as a customer service-based kind of model, we should be open five days a week so that people can take advantage of the services that we provide, because as a city, we are labor, this is what we provide. We should be open, people should be able to utilize the services that we're being paid to provide. On the standpoint of looking at it on a staff perspective, I can see this being a Pandora's Box, you have people who have probably already adjusted childcare, or made other accommodations based on the fact that they will have alternating Fridays off, so to readjust that could be a problem, but I can tell you right now, in healthcare, for instance, we have people who man the customer service lines. Someone has to be there Monday through Friday to answer those calls at all times, right? Business hours, obviously. So, customer service department, it's like 300 people, what do they do? Alternating Friday schedule, it's like a lottery pick. This group of people takes this Friday, the first and the, or the first and the third, and then this group takes the third and the first, the third and the second and the fourth. So, I mean, so Pandora's Box, but there's room for improvement, wiggle room. I'm curious to see what the cost savings to the city is to have everyone gone, even though, like said, I walk in here on a Friday, a Saturday, or Sunday, and there's staff working. So if the City Hall is closed on a Friday, and staff's working, is that considered overtime? Is that considered flex time? What are the cost savings to that if they were already going to be here, right? So I'm curious to see what that looks like, to see what the numbers are, and if in fact it's the cost savings, and by opening this can of worms, it's a problem, then fine, we close it and we don't do it. But if it makes service better, is there an opportunity for our residents to have more access, and I'm all for that. But I'm curious, I would like to see more information to make an educated decision.
Tua.
Yeah, I believe in the service provider. We are a service provider, we should be always available, however, it's associated with the cost. What, how much it's going to cost us, how is that going to affect our budget? So that's what, before we're moving forward, I think we should have all the details, information, so we can make decisions, move forward, before we're disrupting people's life as well. So Scott, if you can help us, provide some data crunching for us, to see how, what's the numbers associated with that, okay?
One quick point I just want to point out, other than the two days a month that we're closed, those other days were open 10 hours a day. Our doors are open 10 hours a day, where other cities are open eight hours a day. So, you know, but they're open every day, so I get that, but I'm just throwing that out there.
But that's part of having a 980, is that you work an additional hour so that you can have that Friday off. But again, it's just half and half, so I would like to see what that pans out to be.
Yeah.
Now, the way that we agendize this, just put it on, can we take action to give direction?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, and to the councilmembers, if I could just chime in on a couple of things, obviously, you know, we're, all 640 employees are here to follow the policy that you set for us. And I guess one of the things I'd beg for some forgiveness on, or some leeway on, I think Councilman Brightigan mentioned it earlier, is just the timing of looking at this. I can tell you, between now and July, your staff are working really, really hard right now, we have a lot of things on our plate, we've got a lot of big development things going on, we're doing a lot of terrific stuff with code enforcement, police, we've got ERP stuff, we've got our fire issues going on, our HR staff are in the middle of a lot of labor negotiations right now, and-
What about the RFP?
With all, you know, as I just think about this, it is, I think, going to be a much, much bigger project to think through it than, you know, maybe all the things, and we really owe it to you to really do some research on this, to make sure that we cover everything that's involved. As was mentioned, the hours that we work, everybody is work, all the staff are working 80 hours. We're open earlier in the morning, at 7:30 in the morning, when developers and other folks like to come in early, they like to stop in, get their permits, drop their plans off, and get things done on their way to the job site. So we're open earlier, we're staying later, so that's important, but certainly understand all the concerns about, you know, about providing service to the community. You know, morale is kind of a hard thing to put your finger on. We do save, I'm sure if we put a report together, we do save some, we can show that we do save some money, it's not going to be probably an amount that would cause yea or nay, but there are some savings probably in what we do. We also use those days to let contractors get into the buildings, to do work when nobody's there. For some of our staff, you know, if we just split them up, we're not that big of an organization, so there's issues that we'd have to look at in terms of, so you get a few people there at the front desk, but do they need a supervisor there? What kind of security do we have in the building? All of that sort of thing. And when I talk about morale, as all of you know, we really have a terrific staff. They will go above and beyond and do whatever you ask them to do, and they're really part of, you've heard them talk about being part of a family a little bit around here. You know, I haven't been here nearly as long as a lot of people have been around, but they do have that feeling of working together. One of my fears would be is, okay, yeah, we assume everybody would like to just, you know, split up, and now we have half as many people. You know, in some cases, what I see from some of our staff, they really like to work together, they like to be together, and they, and sometimes there's some benefit in the collaborative nature of people being together and working together. So, you know, there's lots of little things you just, you can't put your finger on, do we split it up just for the three sections in City Hall that are the front counters? Does that mean, what about the finance people on the second floor, do they all have to split up? What about everybody out in our public work screws that are working together, do we do it for all of them? I'm just, I guess I'm kind of going through all this, not to say yea or nay, just that if we're going to do justice to this project, or to do this work, I think it would take a lot, it's going to take some very thoughtful work to think through all the implications of what might go into it. And if I could just ask one favor is, try to, we've got to present a budget to you here in a couple, in a couple months too, so I think-
We can have it till September.
I'd like to speak if I may.
No.
So, I'm worried about being the mayor.
That's my two cents.
It's hard to actually, the privilege of getting your own two cents worth in. I come in, I'll be upfront and say, I'm pretty apprehensive about this, it's a lot bigger of an undertaking, it's not casual, this is a very big event. It would take a lot of time just to study it, try and figure out, it would be a major disruption on our organizational culture and how we do what we do. We've got a very tight-knit family in there that works hard and plays hard together, and they do collaborate, they work as teams, so it's not like positions are interchangeable, and, oh, you got two code enforcement this week, you got two, or building inspection whatever the next weekend, it's, no, you're a developer, you work with your planner that's assigned to your project, and those sort of things. So, and a lot of things are done in team meetings and collaborative meetings, so it's not like positions are interchangeable, this is a complicated thing. To John's point, it would open up, it would reopen labor negotiations with all the different groups, it would, there's a lot of things it would do. So I'm not particularly thrilled about this concept anyways, and certainly under just the timing constraints, we have so much on our plate right now, this is not a casual little simple thing that staff could do a quick report and come back in two weeks and we could work it all out. This is, this is a major cultural, organizational change, and I don't think it's something we should take lightly. I would personally prefer to just sort of table it offline for now, until we get through the budget cycle, until we get through, you know, just all the stuff that's on our plate right now, and then see if or when we choose to bring it back at a later date.
I do hear everything you're saying, and like I said, I'm not like, you know, I do think it's something that we should, just out of responsibility, look at. I do also think, you know, these items like morale and stuff are a little disingenuous, quite frankly, because I see it in every other organization, and morale is really good. In my organization, we do this, we split it up, we have people there five days a week. As Councilman Nguyen has also indicated, her organization does a similar thing, and I'm sure morale is great there, we're talking one day every other week where they're not married together. So it's a very minimal actual impact in their working conditions. Again, as far as, you know, talking to the unions and stuff, I don't, we're not changing work schedule, we're not changing any of that, so I don't even think it requires a meet and confer, I mean, maybe Omar can go on that, they're not changing a thing. Their times don't change, their days off don't change, there's really no, I mean, they're still off every other Friday, you know? So, and it does give our community our service.
You know, I'm sitting here and I was amazed, because I'm also agree with Mayor Steve Jones, and also agree with Councilman Breidingham. So on this particular concept, I find myself that I agree to both sides. But when I look at this thing, I'm not thinking about changing the culture, because that is a big thing, like Mayor Steve Jones had mentioned. And I'm, I don't think Councilman Breidingham talk about changing the entire workforce, we only limit it to the counter, people who paying bill, and people who need to come in and-
If that's possible, I don't know if that is or not, you know?
And so, and I do not even know whether it's easy or it's not easy, whether it will cost a lot or not cost a lot, but I'm just simply think, why don't, you know, the city manager sit down with David Dance, and with Lee Moreno, and then people in the finance department, and figure out if on one Friday, we have one staff who handle the permit and the finance payment, the bill payment, and in the building and planning department, we have one staff in the building, and one staff in the planning department, if they take turn, you know, one will be off for this Friday, and the other will be off a different Friday. If we can arrange that, and I do not know whether it's feasible or not, whether they require David Dance, who is the manager, have to be there and supervising them, but I was just thinking in that simple concept, and start out very, very small, and see how it go. You know, if it go well, then we allow it to continue, if it doesn't go well, then we say, you know?
And I'm very, just to reiterate, I understand where city staff is with this and the project that may be, and so I have no problem with putting this off until they have time to adequately, you know, look into it and stuff, I don't want to push stuff on them, because we run a lean machine here, and they've got a lot of tasks ahead of them already, so I have no problem with, you know, putting it off to September or October, to give them extra time after July, I think he said, was when you stop getting so busy, and maybe, you know, give them some time to adequately prepare and that kind of stuff.
Do we need a motion to table it, and then we could bring it back up at appropriate time?
I don't think we even need a motion.
You probably do need a motion to table it, just direction to, you know, remind us, revisit it, remind us after the budget, after, you know, summertime.
So in the meantime, just to improve the way we communicate with the communities, what day that the city going to close, which Friday? So instead of say every other Friday, can we do something better?
They fixed that already.
They fixed that already? Okay.
Compliments to Councilman Brightigan, when he talked about it, we looked at it, and we said we can do a better job of clarifying that, and so we've already made those changes to the website, that I do think makes it a little more clear for folks.
So why don't I make a motion to table it until August the second?
We don't need a motion.
I thought the attorney said-
Yeah.
I was saying you don't need a motion.
That's what I was trying to cut that out.
Okay, moving on.
Discussion and no action.
It's just direction, basically.
Okay. Just to, yep. Okay, matters from, any comments from commissioners, from councilmembers? George?
You know, we attended the TET Festival Parade, very enjoyable, very, considering it, it was literally raining cats and dogs. They did an awesome job putting it together, and a little bit of a rain delay, but we got through it, and it was a blast, had a good time, and it was great seeing you all out there, and just, yeah, that's it.
All right, yeah, likewise, that was a great, I think it was a great year, this year, for the TET Parade, even though, yeah, I was still in bed in the morning, I heard that downpour, and like, uh-oh, you know? But the sun came out, and it cleared up, and everything went really well, I think it was a good time. I just wanted to give a brief report on, I did an advocacy trip with the ACCOC, Cities of Orange County, we had about a 50-person delegation that went to Washington DC for three days, it was a Sunday, Monday, Tuesday at the end of last month. Very good trip, I'd say about 25 of those members were elected mayor, city council, and water board members, we were all together. We spent the whole day deliberating different issues like pensions, infrastructure, transportation, water, homelessness, housing, sober living homes, a lot of good things happening there. A White House representative came over, we weren't able to visit the White House, the government was just opening that Monday, it was crazy, Bedlam over there in DC with everybody coming in, but we had a great meeting, we met with all our congressional leaders here from Orange County, we separated into different delegations with electeds in each group, and we had a lot of other members there from Chamber of Commerce, the Orange County Real Estate Association, I mean, anybody, you name it, city managers, there was a ton of people there, and we separated into three groups, we visited Mike Levin, Congressional District 49, Katie Porter, District 45, Harley Rhoda, District 48, Lou Correa's office, Alan Lowenthal's office, Gil Cisneros. We had an hour visit with each one of those- We had an hour visit with each one of those congressional leaders in a very busy day on Tuesday, and some very good dialogue. I was proud of that delegation. They weren't afraid to ask the hard questions. And, you know, I could go into, deepen to issues on each one of these items later, but the sense I got leaving there and the feeling there in Washington is, you know, we're all getting to a point, we all know our country is very divided, but I think people are starting, it's starting to turn, where people are starting to realize that this severe partisan politics is not working for any of us. We need to compromise and come together. And the sense I got, and from what I understand from this Congress, is that, you know, they're still going to get some things. It's going to be a rough couple of two years to the next election, but things, they talked about things that they can get done. Infrastructure, transportation, the opioid crisis, you know, things can be done in this Congress to help all of us. So, I'm a real big advocate of being in the middle and getting, compromising and getting things done. I don't care if you're on the far right, far left, wherever you're at, we've got to get back to the basics, folks, and start talking to each other and getting things done. And I feel that sense coming back, just in my short time there in DC. And I had a great trip, lot of information, a lot of good stuff happening on the sober living stuff that's really going to help us here in Garden Grove. There's a lot of illegal activity that the United States government is clamping down on, which is going to help us here in Garden Grove. And then the homelessness issue, as you know, we've got new centers opening here, hundreds of beds opening in different places, so that's a great thing. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
How about the $100 million that we are looking for our infrastructure? Is that coming soon?
For our what?
Infrastructure.
Oh, the infrastructure, yeah.
$100 million.
They said the check's in the mail.
Okay.
Has not mailed yet.
Yeah. Tu Ha, go ahead.
Well, there's a lot of things going on in the city of Garden Grove, especially District 3. Today, we have a groundbreaking at Garden Brook Seniors. So, very soon, the Rusty Skeleton, we're going to have to say goodbye. So, for those of us taking last pictures before it's gone, going to replace with a new, beautiful, the Village for Senior Affordable Housing. So, thank you. Oh, a big shout out to Lisa Kim and the team on this project.
Yeah. Kim?
Just one quick comment to echo Councilman Tu Ha Wen. You know, that steel frame skeleton, we've been through a lot of pressure, a lot of comment from the public throughout the last decade to, you know, council members tear down that wall. And for a long, long time, we tried to resist that. We tried to make it work. Sometime it's almost, we thought it's almost the end of the tunnel, and then it failed. And then we go through that roller coaster over and over and over again. But one thing I think today is very good, that is sometime we need to be patient, and sometime we need to believe that in the end, it will be the best thing for the city. Had we yield into pressure by the former mayors and tear that structure down, we have nothing. We would have just an empty lot for many, many years to come. But it's a good thing that our city business and economic development insists on, you know, keep the cost, and it's very good that our past city council and our present city council keep the cost, and now we turn the tide. And very soon, maybe sometime in the summer of 2020, we will see a beautiful buildings and a lot of nice homes for, you know, the low-income people. And I think that is a good lesson that we have. On that corner, very soon, we also see the new face for the Brooks Triangle, and over there on the northeast center of that intersection, there soon will be some promising projects that Mayor Steve Jones and I are working with some other developers, and hopefully something nice will be coming out of that as well.
I do have items to report at a closed session, and also the fact that we, council needs to go back into closed session. So, on the closed session items, the council made on the first item, which is anticipated litigation, and there's no reportable action on that. On the second item, which is labor negotiations, the council was not able to complete that portion of the closed session, so we'll have to go back into closed session to complete that, and real property negotiations that will have to be taken after this regular meeting as well.
Go ahead, Scott.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to mention one final thing. Tomorrow at 2 o'clock is the memorial service for our fire chief, Tom Schultz. It will be a sad day for everybody, but it'll be a memorial service celebrating all of his accomplishments in his career. So, from that standpoint, it will be a nice afternoon, so. The event will take place at the EV Free Church at 2801 North Brea Boulevard in Fullerton, and so I think the public is going to attend as well.
Thank you. Two things. We had a very successful state-of-the-city luncheon recently since our last meeting. Sold-out crowd at Great Wolf Lodge, beautiful event hosted by the Chamber of Commerce. The recurring comments I picked up from everybody I talked to are the fact is everybody's blown away when they come and they hear just everything condensed in a gathering like that, just how much we have going on in the city. And they say, wow, you guys are busy, right? You guys had it busy last year, you got it busy this year already lined up. And we really do. I mean, we're blowing the doors off, taking full advantage of this wonderful market cycle that we're enjoying. And so, yeah, everybody hard at work all over town, private development, business expansions, you name it, Rusty Skeleton coming to fruition, all these things, right? It's exciting. It's exciting times for Garden Grove, so with that, we're going to go to closed session. We may have a, coming back after, but before, I do want to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Fire Chief Schultz, who passed away on Sunday, January 27th. Chief Schultz demonstrated his commitment in all aspects of his life. He was a man truly dedicated to his faith and his family, as well as hard-working public servant with the utmost positivity. Chief Schultz was a man that always tried to do good for the public because he truly believed that a single individual had the ability to make an impact on an entire community. Words cannot describe how this loss is felt across all communities that Chief Schultz was an honorable member and leader of. He leaves behind his wife of 30 years, Kim Schultz, and three children. Our most sincere condolences to his family and the Garden Grove Fire Department. And with that, we will adjourn to our closed session items. Mr. Staff?
So they...
There's four here.
So there's two people that didn't show up.
Oh, okay.
Early and Shipley.
Early and Shipley?
Early and Shipley.
Ready to move?
True.
Okay.
Is that our traffic jam?
Yeah.
That's where we brought that cable down.
Did you bring the cable down? Not yet.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I'm talking into, into Council One. Check, 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 check. Testing, testing. Are you picking me up up there? Testing, testing. One, two. Okay, this is Council Two. Testing, testing. One, two. Testing, testing. One, two. Council Two. Testing, one, two. You want me to keep going? Testing, testing, testing. One, two. One, two. Testing, testing. One, two.
This guy's, uh...
It's going to be some...
It's like a journal.
Who's it?
He's got most of it written in Korean, but then it says it's steel can and welded to all.
Do you have phone numbers?
Yeah, it's got his phone number.
Oh, I can call him.
I can nail it to him. I can send it to him. Send him an email and tell him we haven't moved.
If you want, it would be a costume.
Tell him just don't come on here, it'll fly.
Yeah, right. Actually, we're closed today.
It's Friday.
Oh, my God.
So how do you feel about that?
Oh, it's just gonna be nice.
How do you use it?
Yeah, I mean, the thing is, okay.
I get what they're saying, and I think they just want, where you can pay your bills, and you can follow your, your plans when you move to the city. I think that's pretty much good.
We went to the 980 for that reason, because all of your contractors want to get out early in the morning. So we went to the 980 to accommodate them.
So you're opening up at 7:30? So how hard is it though to, so everyone's the second and the fourth Friday they're off to switch one person to the first?
So we don't have a huge amount of staff and people. So if you had, say, for example, like, it was idea of having, um, you know, your permit people, like, like a couple of permit people, building inspector, and then, and then, say, if you had a couple of people in finance department, taking money or whatever, and say you open the door and, okay, this is, you know, this is your skeleton crew, you are...